Not always a bad thing. Don't explain why.
Okay, you guys ready?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the order of the Sparks City Council meeting of October 28th, 2019 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Iting.
Here.
City Manager Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we do the invocation, we have Dr. Bradley Corbin from the Baha'i to talk about the Baha'i bicentenary. Yes, come on up. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Bradley Corbin. I'm a citizen of Sparks at Lawson's Ward. And I want to thank you, the councilman and mayor for allowing us to speak today.
Thank you.
And also thank you for proclamation that you have given to the Baha'i faith.
Okay.
This year. The reason we're here today is that the Baha'i faith is the second most worldwide spread religion in the world. And even though our members are small in Reno and Sparks, we have a world presence. And we are celebrating now the birth of the founder or the first prophet of the Baha'i faith, Bob. And he was born October 29th, 1819. And he was bestowed the title of Bob, which means the gate. And he sought to prepare the people of the world for the imminent appearance of Bahaloa, who was the founder of the Baha'i faith. We are celebrating, Baha'is worldwide will be celebrating tonight. And we have a public celebration this coming this Saturday, and we have an invitation for all the council members and the mayor. And we'll have that handed to you later. That's pretty simple what I wanted to say. And then we have Donna that will do an invocation.
Okay, so if you all stand please for the invocation, Donna Sosnowski. Welcome, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a prayer for America from the sacred writings of the Baha'i faith. Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee, thy bounty and bestowal.
Thank you very much. If you'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Councilman Lawson, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. I will open up the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. 5.1 approval of the agenda. Anybody want to pull anything, Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Actually, is this where we pull an item?
Oh.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Pull 8.2.
So I'll, I move to pull 8.2 and continue with the rest of the agenda then.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Second any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Okay. Can you hear us? Okay, Charlene?
Uh, just very, a little bit trouble on, on the the motion, what you were removing or changing. I couldn't hear.
Okay, we're pulling 8.2 out of the consent items. Okay, it passes.
Okay, thank you.
It passes unanimously. 6.1 consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council and Sparks Planning Commission Joint Workshop for September 23rd, 2019, and the Sparks City Council meeting for October 14th, 2019. Looking for a motion to accept the minutes. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Anderson?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. 7.1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Mr. Croods.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith. We have a total of 15 vacancies across six boards. So I'll read them all as, as one continuous presentation, if that's okay with the other council. First one is for the Airport Noise Advisory Panel. We are seeking one member to fill a two-year term, which expires December 31st of, December 31st of 2021. Applications will be accepted through the end of the day on Friday, November 29th. 7.2 is for our Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. We're looking for two members filling four-year terms, which would end December 31st of 2023. The committee requires representation from both residential and commercial construction industries. Applications will be accepted through the end of the day on Friday, November 29th as well there for both of those positions. The third one is for the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. We are looking for two alternate members, one to fill a partial term ending November of 2020 in Ward 5, and one to fill a, a partial term in Ward 2, ending in November of 2022. Applicants should be residents of Sparks, preferably in the wards I've spoken to, Wards 5 and 2, and preferably over the age of 55. We will accept applications for both of those vacancies through the end of the day this Friday, November 1st. Item 7.4 is for the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. We're looking for two positions there. An alternate member filling a partial term, which would end in November of 2022, looking from Ward 2. And then one member filling a partial term, ending in November of 2020, from Ward 3. Both positions are co-terminous with the appointing council members, so they run with your positions there. Applications for both of those vacancies will be accepted through the end of the day on Monday, December 16th, 2019. 7.5 is for our Planning Commission. We have two vacancies there, filling four-year terms, which would end December 31st of 2023. And applications for both of those positions will be accepted through close of business on Friday, November 29th. And finally, our Charter Committee. We are looking for six members to fill the appointments that are co-terminous with the term of the appointing person. And the expiration dates for those vary by, by position, so it's a little cumbersome to go through on that. But applications for all six of those positions are, are due by the close of business on Friday, November 15th.
Isn't the Charter Committee, I'm sorry, aren't, aren't they appointed by the council member?
They are.
Okay.
And, but we need applications so that you know who, who wants, who wants the job. And it's something that we go through after each legislative session. We have to
Okay.
essentially reform the committee. So that's what we're, we're kicking off here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to consent items. Remember, we pulled 8.2. Looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve consent items, excluding 8.2, which we did pull.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, general business, 9.1. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the appointments to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee for three alternate positions.
I'm sorry, um, yeah. Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Should we take 8.2 first?
We pulled it.
Yeah, did you want to take it before you do?
For separate consideration, is my understanding.
Oh, I thought it was pulled by the applicant.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant you were taking it out of consent. So it's just simply pulled, not.
Right, the applicant pulled.
Okay, I misunderstood. I apologize, Mayor.
Okay.
The applicant has pulled it, so.
Okay, moving on here. Alternate positions, co-terminous with their appointing electrical, elected officials. Neil, is this you?
Yes, it is.
I think we need to get our act together. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are appointing three vacancies to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. One in each Ward, Ward 2, that would have a term ending in November of 2022, from Ward 3 having a term ending in November of 2020, and in Ward 4, ending in November of 2022. We advertised for these three vacancies, but only received applications in Wards 3 and 4. The vacancy for Ward 2 has been, has been reposted, so we're continuing to look for names there. And we're now looking for your direction.
Okay, so the two people that were nominated, Cynthia Esparza and Alan Munson. Is that correct?
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Um, I just, I just wanted to recommend, highly recommend my alternate to the SCAC of Cynthia Esparza. Encourage us and counselor to support her as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve the appointments to Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee of two alternate positions, Ward 3 and 4, co-terminous with their appointing elected officials.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second. Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. Second any further discussion?
I have a discussion.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
On here, it says it's for Ward 2 as well, but the recommendation, what he just motioned didn't include Wards 2.
Uh, we didn't.
I could speak to that.
Okay, go ahead.
For the record, New York City Manager, we did not have any applicants for, from Ward 2, so we extended the opportunity to apply for that. And we'll bring that back as soon as we've got
Thank you.
somebody for, or more than one person for the council to consider.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. 9.2. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of customer service agreement AC 5621 between the City of Sparks and Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA NV Energy. Brandon, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Sendl, Assistant City Attorney. Before you is a proposed customer services agreement between the City of Sparks and NV Energy. The city was approached by NV Energy a few months back regarding this agreement. The proposed agreement would pay the city incentives of $125,000 a year for the next three years. In exchange, the city would agree to remain a, a full service or a fully bundled customer of NV Energy for five years. So essentially by entering into this agreement, the city would be agreeing not to file what's known as a 704B application by the Public Utilities Commission of Nevada. Probably seen some stories in the papers the last few years about, you know, mainly large casino entities and other major energy users filing those. So that would be what the city's obligation would be under this agreement. I do have two points of clarification on this. This agreement addresses the city's governmental electrical loads, you know, the service at City Hall, Al Sorenson and Larry D. Johnson. It doesn't affect individual citizens' relationships with NV Energy. And second, it addresses the, the City of Sparks load without Tumorf. Because Tumorf is jointly owned and operated with, with the City of Reno. This, this agreement only addresses non-Tumorf electrical loads with the City of Sparks. With that, staff is recommending approval, and I can answer any questions. And we also have representatives from NV Energy here.
Questions? About energy, did you want to say anything? Where'd they go? There she is. Hi, Linda. Come on down, Linda.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Linda Visser, NV Energy Government Affairs Executive. Mr. Sendl stated it very well. And we have appreciated the relationship with Sparks as a customer. It's been almost a decade. We want to continue that relationship in serving you as a customer. So we'd ask for your approval of the agreement. I also want to point out that, that the account representative for the City of Sparks is here, Melissa Fritsch. She's in the back of the room, so she.
Look over here.
Hi, Melissa. Okay, are there any questions or comments, Mr. Dare?
I'd like to say we have appreciated the relationship we've had with NV Energy, not just us, our whole region, obviously. It all affects everything. And so the next five years would be great, and I'll make a motion if you'd like, or if there's more to talk about.
Sure, make a motion.
So, um, read exactly what they have. The proposed agreement, I'm sorry, that's not ugly. I move to approve customer service agreement AC 5621 between the City of Sparks and Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA NV Energy, to provide the city with $125,000 annually for each of the next three years, subject to the city remaining a fully bundled customer of NV Energy for the next five years.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have, you mean second?
Second, yeah, I'll second.
Do that to me every time.
You can second the move to approve.
I second it, yeah.
You approve of me?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.3. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of agreement AC 5617 with refuse incorporated DBA Lockwood Regional Landfill. Michael?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Excuse me, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you today for your consideration and agreement with refusing DBA Lockwood landfill for the continued disposal of biosolids from Tumorf at the landfill. This is our current practice, our, that's the solid portion of the waste goes to landfill. The liquid portion, of course, returned to the river after treatment. Our prior agreement expired June 30th of 2019. Mr. Mayor negotiated the current agreement you have before you. It essentially extends the same services we've been getting for more than a decade now with the landfill. We would see a 4.5% increase on rates immediately because typically this agreement has a, an inflation adjustment every July 1st. But because it expired on June 30th, there was no adjustment for calendar 2019. So that would go into effect immediately. And then each July 1st for the rest of the agreement, it would be adjusted according to a specific consumer price index published by the U.S. Department of Labor. It's the, the All Urban U.S. Cities Garbage and Trash Index. So with that, the initial agreement would be for a period of 36 months with four mutually agreeable one-year extensions after that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Michael, I thought it was by the truckload.
It is. So I'm sorry, the rate is by the ton, excuse me, not the truck, but by the ton.
Okay.
So.
And one truckload?
10, 15, 10, it depends.
That much?
Yes. So we, that's why we're not too concerned about it in the sense because we pay by the ton. But we also do pay the trucking company by the load, so we do have a camera. We do screen them as they leave the plant to make sure that they're reasonably full. They're not short loading us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the agreement AC-5617 with refuse Inc. Doing business as Lockwood Regional Landfill for the disposal of biosolids at the Lockwood Regional Landfill from Tumorf.
Okay, a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Michael. Okay, 9.4. Consideration and possible approval of a professional service contract AC 5620 with NCE in the amount of $256,940 to develop Phase 1 conceptual land and faculty master plans. Armando?
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the City Council. I am Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. The purpose of this contract is to initiate the preparation of facility and master plans for an area located east of Sparks and in fact, east of the Para Mountain Range that for the purposes of the work we're doing, we're referring to as the Federal Lands Future Service Area. And it's comprised of lands managed by the Federal Bureau of Land Management. So if I can bring your attention to the map on the screen. The City of Sparks corporate boundary is delineated in the purple line. Immediately to the east of that is the Para Mountain Range. The lands that are shown as hatched are lands managed by the BLM. If the lands are not hatched, they're privately owned. In terms of some of the other features of the map, each of the squares represents a section of land or one square mile, 640 acres. And then the green and yellow areas represent areas that have slopes of less than 30% and therefore are potentially developable. The dark green and hatched area here, if you will, sort of in the middle of the, of this area, has been designated by the BLM as an area of critical environmental concern, and I'll touch on what that means further in a minute. And then the dash lines represent possible roadway alignments. And the thought here is, of course, is to connect Sparks to this future service area and then potentially out to Story County and TRIC out there. So the reason Sparks is looking at these lands is that should it prove feasible, a new industrial area out here could provide sites for large industrial users. Some think users on the scale potentially of those out at the Tower Reno Industrial Center, really, really large users, which currently can't be accommodated within Sparks today, or for that matter, in very limited instances inside of greater Washoe County. City staff is proposing this contract with NCE as the consultant in large part because their project team is headed by John Walsh, who's sitting in the back row. He's the engineer leading the, the team. And he has considerable experience developing a, an earlier facility plan for a possible growth area for Sparks out here in 2008. The project team includes Stan Tech as a subconsultant to NCE. So this planning effort is intended to build on some of that prior analysis, and Sparks anticipates it will be undertaken in two, two phases. The scope of work for this first phase will involve updating portions of that previous analysis, undertaking a conceptual level land planning exercise, so trying to define which, which area of land specifically out here could be appropriate for development, assessing environmental and drainage issues in particular. And then again, evaluating the possible transportation links between Sparks, the proposed industrial area and, and points to the east. In particular, the analysis will be looking at developing constraints to assess what, you know, how that might affect the location, size, and configuration of the proposed industrial area as well as the alignment of the roadways. These potential constraints include slopes, floodplains, and the aforementioned area of critical environmental concern, which the BLM has designated as such due to the possible presence of petroglyphs and other cultural and archaeological resources out there. In terms of a schedule for this, NEC is anticipating that they could complete the Phase 1 work in approximately seven months. Staff foresees, again, doing this in two, two stages, two phases, if you will. And the thinking is that first, that the work can be used to inform consideration of the proposed federal lands bill. So, you know, that, that will be introduced fairly soon potentially. But as it's considered, this can inform that, that discussion. And then in turn, once a federal lands bill is acted upon or, or approved, then we would have more information to continue the, the planning work for this proposed industrial area. So if there is a second phase, then we would be looking at refining the plans and analyses for transportation, water, sanitary sewer, and effluent infrastructure. There would be a fiscal impact analysis and a cultural resources inventory. The thought here is that by going through a two-phase process, we could spread the cost to the city over two fiscal years. And then hopefully, by initiating the second phase after the federal lands bill is done, then we would hopefully avert having to, you know, redo work that we'd already done and incur an additional expense. So in terms of funding for this contract, the city's adopted FY '20 budget includes $300,000 for this. Again, the proposed contract amount is $256,940. And staff is recommending approval of the contract with NEC, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Lawson?
Glad to see us getting on front of this. It's obviously a big deal for multiple decades to come for the City of Sparks. And I think a great revenue source for the city for the future. Unless there's other questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the professional services contract AC 5620 with NCC in the amount, NCE in the amount of $256,940 to develop Phase 1 of conceptual land and facility master plans for the federal lands future service area.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Abbott?
Second, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Charlene?
Um, I, I just wanted to commend the staff on this presentation. I totally support spending the money to do this, but I think the two phases is critically important and just makes sense as we're looking to try to get the federal lands bill, and we're ready, and we have the information, the expertise that we need to move forward, but doing it in the two phases, I support it. I would just like to thank, uh, thank staff and look forward to working with NCE to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Armando. Okay, we do not have any public hearing action items unrelated to planning and zoning. We'll move on to planning and zoning, public hearing items and action items, 11.1. Ian, second reading, public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Bill Number 2766 to rezone a site approximately 17,043 square feet in size, located at 1620 Pyramid Way. Soulers?
Members of the City Council, I'm Ian Critten, and I'm your senior planner. So this is a rezoning request. The site is this triangular property outlined in red. It's located on the east side of the T intersection of Pyramid Way and Holman Way. There are three findings related to rezoning requests. They are that the rezoning request is in, is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, that the request is consistent with the surrounding uses, and the third one has to do with public notice and holding public hearings. So this site has a commercial land use, comprehensive plan land use designation. The applicant is requesting to change the existing zoning, which is C1 or neighborhood commercial, to C2, which is general commercial. The comprehensive plan land use designation of C permits both the C1 and C2 zoning districts. So, uh, sorry. Both zonings conform with comprehensive plan land use designation. So we find, which supports the finding of, finding Z1. Sorry. In addition, staff believes that there are a series of, of various comprehensive plan goals and policies that are supported by the change from C1 to C2. Rezoning from C1 to C2 maintains the current commercial land use, land use, or commercial nature of the site while extending the uses available on that site, which supports goal MG1, which is to support economic development by providing non-residential land uses. The surrounding development is, the surrounding redevelopment, these sites just to the north and slides to the east have been recently redeveloped. And that redevelopment is indicative of the potential of redevelopment that this site has, which supports goal MG4, which is to facilitate infill and redevelopment. City services can be provided at acceptable levels at this site, which is in conformance with policy CF1, which is when reviewing new development, the city will not approve application unless the city services can be provided at acceptable levels. I'm ending the zoning on this site will permit a wider range of uses on a smaller site, making it more likely to attract small businesses. And it supports goal EV1 and policy EV2. Goal EV1 is to grow and diversify Sparks' economy. And policy EV6, I may have said policy EV2, but policy EV6 supports, is to support entrepreneurs by providing appropriately zoned areas with the infrastructure, public facilities, and services necessary to start and grow a small business. The C2 zoning district does allow a wider range of uses, both by, by right or by conditional use permit than the C1 district does. And this is detailed quite extensively in the staff report. There's a large table detailing all of those many, many differences. However, because all of the surrounding properties to this site already have a C2 zoning district, the, the increase of available uses on this site is not anticipated to have any sort of a conflict with the uses available on the adjacent sites, which supports finding C2, or Z2. And then finally, notice, this rezoning was mailed to all property owners within 750 feet of the site. 98 property owners were mailed notice, and public notice was. Ninety-eight property owners were mailed notice, and public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on August 21st. The Planning Commission and the City Council meeting qualify as the public hearings for this item. At the, that does support finding that Z3 can be made. At the September 5th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did forward a motion to recommend approval to the City Council. I am available for any questions. That's the end of my presentation. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for him.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
So, you know, are we gonna have direct access off of Pyramid for this? Partial, or are we gonna access it some other way?
That is the intent, however, that'll be after worked out with the actual application for a specific use on the site. With the rezoning, we don't kind of get into those details, but that is the anticipated is what they're looking for. There's an existing access from Pyramid. It'll have to be reapproved by NDOT. The applicant may be able to speak to the level that he's gotten to with NDOT of discussing whether or not he can continue to have access to directly to Pyramid.
I think that's gonna be important with, that is, one, two, three, four, five entrance points there. This would make six in a basically a 300-yard area that seems to be a little dangerous in my mind for the traffic going up Pyramid. But so, and I agree, then it'll be addressed at a later time, which I'm good with that. But other than that, I think, great idea. It was, that old house was sat there abandoned for a long time, and it sure looks better just even as dirt right now.
And, you know, that's the intersection I'm talking about with NDOT, about getting a flashing light in there, because it's pretty busy in that little, little section of the road there.
Corridor.
Yeah. Any further discussion from the council? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment period. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Lawson.
I'm gonna make a motion. I move based on the findings Z1 through Z3 as set forth in the staff report to adopt Bill Number 2766, an ordinance to rezone real property approximately 17,043 square feet in size and located at 1620 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, from Seawood, C1 neighborhood commercial to C2 general commercial.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Deere.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ian. Move on to 11.2, public hearing. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on an appeal from an administrative decision to revoke a home occupation permit, which permitted the operation of a business at 3396 La Vega Court, Sparks, Nevada, in the SF6 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Mr. Rundle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sparks City Council, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager. You may be asking yourself, what is a home occupation permit? Well, a home occupation permit allows a resident to conduct business from their home in a zoning district that otherwise may not allow for such a permitted use to occur there. Some example may be like a piano teacher that hosts students in their home and conducts a piano lessons in their home. Now, I may end up using in my presentation the term HOP. As Councilwoman Bybee likes to point out, planners get into their acronyms and initials, and just let you know that stands for home occupation permit. But I'll try, I'll try to use that, the right term. Home occupation permit provides the city of Sparks a regulatory tool to ensure that the residential character of a neighborhood is maintained while permitting certain uses within a, within a home. An HOP was issued to the Erin Lady in the Erin Lady Reno, Sparks, in July of 2015, and in September of 2019, the city manager revoked this permit. Here today, the City Council is considering the appeal by Clara Okerson of the Erin Lady, Reno, Sparks. In this presentation, I'm going to outline the laws governing a home occupation permit in the Sparks Municipal Code, and identify what was allowed by that home occupation permit that was issued for, to the Erin Lady of Reno, Sparks, for 3396 La Vega Court. And then lastly, outline what led to the revocation of the home occupation permit. The Sparks Municipal Code specifies certain laws regarding the use of a home occupation permit. Now, if you'll oblige me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read some of these into the record. A home occupation permit can be utilized to operate a business within a home if the business is clearly secondary and incidental to the use of the site as a residence. The home occupation shall not change the residential character of the home. There shall be no use of any garage, accessory building, yard space, or any other activity outside the living area of the residence in association with the home occupation permit. If storage of supplies or goods is required, the areas used for storage shall not be visible from outside of the dwelling unit, outside of the home. The home occupation shall not be operated without the written consent of the property owner. In July of 2015, the city of Sparks issued a home occupation permit to Clara Okerson of the Erin Lady Reno, Sparks, for 3396 La Vega Court. 3396 La Vega Court is a single-family residential zoning district, and it, excuse me, 3396 La Vega Court is within a single-family residential zoning district. The application that is now up on the screen behind me and in front of me identifies, and I've highlighted it in yellow, that Clara Okerson intended to use the home as a home office only. And that is highlighted. Do we need to zoom in on that, or is that visible? Okay. Since the home occupation issuance, the Code Enforcement Division has received several complaints at 3396 La Vega Court. The next exhibit, which is in your packet, Exhibit F, identifies the location of 3396 La Vega Court, and it is essentially in the neighborhood of Queen Way and North Truckee Since that time, the issuance of the home occupation permit, staff has conducted multiple inspections, had several enforcement actions, and provided violation notices and citations to the property owner of 3396 La Vega Court. Those violations were for general nuisances, outdoor storage, waste and refuse, parking of commercial vehicles, and illegal parking of recreational vehicles. And in a parallel track, since the home occupation was permitted, the Nevada Department of Motor Vehicles also prosecuted the property owner for acting as a car dealer without a dealership license. This ultimately went to Sparks Justice Court, where the property owner pled guilty to those accusations. I've outlined here that there were numerous violations occurring at 3396 La Vega Court since the issuance of the home occupation permit in July of 2015. There have been over nine violations that have occurred at that site since that time. On August 23rd of 2019, the Code Enforcement Division received an additional citizen complaint regarding the renting of vehicles at this location. Again, as we just referenced on the application for the home occupation permit, it identified the use of the home would simply be as office only. Had the original home occupation permit requested the use of vehicle rentals, it may have been denied because vehicle rentals is a use that's restricted and limited to the industrial zoning district in the city of Sparks. Staff did conduct an inspection based on those complaints, those citizen complaints, and after, after that complaint came in and did observe that there were vehicles in proximity to 3396 that matched a internet advertisement depicting vehicle rentals. Now, if we can look at Exhibit D, we've highlighted on this exhibit section that says, "We have two vans for rent for Burning Man use. Contact us for pictures." The next page of the ad, which is part of Exhibit D, we've highlighted that the email in reference to this exhibit, excuse me, in reference to this advertisement was for, can we, should I zoom in on that, Mr. Mayor?
I can see it.
This was now the 10th zoning violation since the home occupation permit had been issued in July of 2015. So on September 4th, 2019, the city manager revoked the home occupation permit issued to Clara Okerson of the Erin Lady Reno, Sparks. The Sparks Municipal Code identifies how a home occupation permit can be revoked. In this case, the city manager cited in the revocation letter that information had been falsely provided on the initial application, as we looked at. It said office use only. Utilizing the site for vehicle rentals and storing them outside of the living area are also both violations of the home occupation permit. The revocation letter includes that the home occupation shall be conducted entirely within the home by the persons residing within the home as a secondary and incidental use of the home. What's the goal of the governance of a home occupation permit? Well, again, I think the home occupation permit is trying to maintain the residential character of a single-family residential zoning district, as evidenced by the numerous complaints that the city receives. The Code Enforcement Division, the storage of the vehicles offered for rent outside of the home was enough to affect the residential character of that neighborhood. And what would revocation of this home occupation permit mean? Well, essentially, the use of the home as a business would have to cease immediately. That would include all of the office uses that are currently being conducted at the site would have to cease. If the City Council upheld this revocation, the business license would be revoked as well, because essentially, the home occupation permit and the business license work hand in hand. On September 11th, 2019, the city received an appeal of the revocation by Clara Okerson of Erin Lady Reno, Sparks. As I mentioned earlier during the DMV discussion, the property owner is Mr. and Mrs. Osawa, Jacob and Edith. Now, I want to go back to Exhibit A and look out of the HOP application, and we'll look at Page Two, which is in your, in your packet. We've highlighted some sections at the bottom of Page Two on the application for a home occupation permit. And I want to read what is in bold above the signatures that we have, both of the property owner and of the applicant. It reads that "I have read the above home occupation standards and understand that I must meet and comply to the home occupation standards. I certify that the information obtained in this application is true and correct to the best of my knowledge." So there we have both the property owner signing off that they will comply with the home occupation standards and, and the applicant. Did I say the applicant? The applicant and the property owner. And again, I touched on them earlier in the presentation, but they're offered to those applying for it in Section B on this app, on this application. When the applicant and the property owner sign this application, it ensures to staff, or it ensures to the city, that the property owner and the applicant are aware of all of the rules governing a home occupation permit. This is no different than what staff would do, planning staff would do for a conditional use permit, or a rezoning, or an annexation, when we get an owner affidavit, owner affidavit, and an applicant affidavit, to ensure the owner knows someone's moving forward with annexing property that they may, may very well own. It just ensures to staff that everybody is on the same page. Now, I'd like to take a minute and go back to the revocation by the city manager of the home occupation permit. I identified that we did find two vehicles matching the pictures in the advertisement provided by the complaining citizen. But you may ask yourself from, from your seat, is this circumstantial evidence? On, on Exhibit C, this was the attachment that was attached to the appeal that came in on September 11th by, by Clara Okerson. In the second paragraph, it identifies, "Whereas we advertised on Craigslist concerning two vans available for rental, this was a last-minute favor for my client." So we do have identification that the, that the home occupation permit holder does verify that they did, in fact, advertise to rent vehicles in this letter attached to the home occupation permit appeal. My presentation included the laws regulating a home occupation permit, and how those provide assurances to the residential character of a neighborhood, ensuring that those neighborhood, assuring that the neighborhood won't be compromised, the neighborhood for single-family residential. We also touched on an explanation that the home occupation was issued to permit an office only for 3396 La Vega Court. And lastly, we led, or we reviewed what led to the ultimate revocation by the city manager of the home occupation permit for 3396 La Vega Court. I'm asking that the City Council affirm the city manager's decision to revoke the home occupation permit issued to 3396 La Vega Court, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I will open up the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Would you like to speak? Sure, come on down. Welcome. Just identify yourself, and you have three minutes to.
Okay. I'm Joy Osawa.
Pardon me?
Joy Osawa.
Let's begin in the microphone so that we can record it.
Joy Osawa.
Okay, thank you.
And this is my mom, Clara Okerson. So what I have to say concerning, we receive a letter that they want to revoke our license.
I made a mistake. You get 15 minutes if you want to speak.
Oh, 15 minutes.
15.
Oh. So, um, we receive a letter down sometime in August that they want to revoke our license. And if you can see from the Exhibit A sent to us, it's quite different. I was the one that posted the ad on Craigslist, but it was different. I don't know where they got the pictures from. I did not put pictures on my ad on Craigslist. I run errand for Burning Man clients, and I have some of my clients that do come to Burning Man every year. But unfortunately, they could not come this year, and they asked me to advertise their van for them locally, because they base in New Zealand. They don't have anybody locally to advertise their van, which I did. I do not have the van in my possession. The van wasn't parked in front of my house. I don't even know where this van in question is parked. All I'm doing is just to advertise this van for them. And they told me if I find someone who is interested locally, I should give them their number through WhatsApp. So mine was just to help them. If they found some, if I found someone locally that wants to use the van for Burning Man, I have to give them their number so they can go ahead and do the communication within the safe. I do not have that van in my possession. That was why I said contact for pictures. But I was surprised that they took this picture off from another Craigslist and attached it to my own Craigslist. And also, if you see the pictures they sent to me, pictures of bicycle, if you look at my Craigslist ad, there was no bicycle advertised on my Craigslist account. Just all I said was please contact for pictures, because I do not even have the pictures with me. The pictures was with my clients in New Zealand. All I'm doing is I'm just a medium man helping them to advertise their van locally. That was all I did. The bicycle, I don't know where they got that from. It was not, I did not put bicycle on my ad. Only what we do is housekeeping, we run errand locally. That's all. And when we do housekeeping, it's just only a small portion in my garage that I put my cleaning supply. I do not put anything outside my garage or anything on the streets that will become a nuisance. I do not. But I have some neighbors that have been calling around. Anything we do in a 3396 is a problem. If I park my car, they come. If I do something, they come. Day to day, park their car, no problem. I do not have time going from house to house, trying to see who owns this van, car, who owns this car. I'm a mom of four. I'm busy. I have to take care of my kids and have to pay for my home. I have to do so many things. I do not have time. As far as the car is not parked in front of my house, and I can go into my house, I'm fine. But my neighbors, they complain anything we do. But when they do something, it's fine. Nobody complains about them. As soon as anyone from 3396 does something, they call the city, they call the cops, they call everybody. So that's why I'm coming to plead that my license should not be revoked. This is how I'm work, that the errand service is my second job, that I and my mom run. This is how I work to get extra income, to pay for my kids, to pay, to take care of my kids. myself and to provide for my family. I'm coming on behalf of me and my kids to say, please, I do not want my license to be revoked because I did not violate nothing. The car, the van on that, on the Craigslist was not parked in my compound. I do not even have the car, the van. It was parked somewhere else because I know I can't even park those vans in my yard or in front of the house or somewhere because I know my neighbors will call. I do not have the vans in my possession. I do not even have the pictures. All I said, that's why I said contact for pictures. So I don't know where they got it. So I'm appealing to the council that my license should not be, my HOP should not be revoked. Thank you.
Okay. Don, let me favor run over and move that microphone back. Did you want to say something, ma'am?
What my daughter said is what I will say because we don't sell cars. Our, okay, our is errand, going to errand, that is it. We don't have any other thing, myself and my daughter. If they have problem with the person parking car there or bicycle, they should deal with the person, not me and my daughter. We just have two plastic that we put, the cleaning supply, period.
So according to you two, there's nothing ever in your front yard?
No.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Not by anybody?
No. The two vehicles they put is not from our own Erin Lady ad, it's from another ad. They now pull it, the pictures are here. They now pull it and put it here.
And two separate accounts. The account they got that picture from is not Erin Lady account. The phone number on the picture is not my phone number. So the pictures, the pictures they sent to me, you can actually see the number different. If you pull up my business online, you will see my number is different from the number they sent to me. They pull out.
Whose number is it?
I, I, I don't know. They should contact the person. And let me see, hold on. As far as, it's not my, it's not my, it's not my business. They should contact the person that...
So you don't know whose number it is?
Who's, let me see. They are putting, they are putting...
I know, I saw it on my map.
Okay, it's the husband's phone number.
It's the what?
It's for courage.
Courage.
They should deal with him, not you.
They should deal with courage, not photo.
It's her husband's number.
Yeah.
You didn't know that, though.
Courage, yeah.
No, I have number, that's why I said I highlighted it. So this is the number I like, oh, and they saw it. So I didn't, I can't say. I saw it, so that one is for courage. If they want to deal with him, if they have issue with him, they should deal with me. I'm a different person entirely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Don, will you get one with them, put the microphone over the speaker so Charlene can hear us?
Sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay, that's right. Bend it down, yeah. Okay, who's, you done? Okay, Mr. Lawson.
Can you bring it back from the public comment? Did we do that? All right.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Lawson.
It's frustrating for me. Nine violations in the last four years, dozens of letters. There's a business being run out of there that's illegal. You can't tell me you don't know about it because you confronted me in this corner on the street. You followed me to my car. You're yelling at me in the street that I have no right to take pictures. And you're just not a very nice neighbor, bottom line. You can't put junk out there. You can't, I'm sorry, ma'am, you don't get to speak now. It's, you can't put junk in your front yard and expect nobody to be upset by it. You can't park old disabled vehicles and hundreds of bicycles in your driveway and expect your neighbors to not be upset by it. I got a letter from roughly 20 neighbors with signatures complaining about your address. I don't know what to do other than I'm going to ask our staff to come back and find a way that we can deal with an illegal business with an obvious person who doesn't understand that you can't run a business out of your house without a permit regardless of your husband. You know what's going on at your own house. So I'm not worried about that. You know what he's doing. You know, you've seen the junk. I've been there to see it myself. So I'm going to ask, it's going to be your lucky day because I really believe you violated the permit and the home occupation permit because you advertised for renting vans. So, and I think on that alone, we could revoke your license. But I'm going to, I'm going to be good to you today, and I'm going to hope that you encourage your husband to find a way to do business somewhere besides the cul-de-sac with all your other neighbors because it's frustrating. I've been chasing you guys for four years now, trying to find a way to get this business to stop operating in a house. It's wrong. It's just wrong. It's not being a good neighbor. It's not the spirit of Sparks. Sparks is family-oriented. We don't want that kind of junk in the yard and bringing down the values of the homes around it. So you're going to get lucky today because I'm going to ask that the city council follow me in not revoking the business license, but I would also like you to follow me into the fact that we're going to get some teeth because right now, this is not working. And I mean, we're going to start fining immediately upon second warning, you're going to start getting fines. And I fear that's the only thing that's going to get the point across to these people that want to run an illegal business. We had another dealing with someone else in Ward Two. He got the point and he quit operating an illegal business. You guys haven't gotten the point yet. So we're going to continue to pursue this and we're going to put some more teeth in our ordinance if I get my way. So I will, so what I'm going to ask is that...
Put it in the form of motion for me.
I'm trying to get to it right here. I'd like the staff to propose code amendments that would allow home occupation permits and potentially other permits to be revoked due to zoning violations occurring on the property, not necessarily to do with the business that has the home occupation permit. And I'd also like to say that we are going to overturn Mr. Krutz's decision to revoke the business license at this time, knowing that we're going to put more teeth into this ordinance in the coming future.
Okay, that's, there's a lot in that motion, and I don't know if we can do that.
I'm sorry. The, I think, is, I understand, okay. I think this needs to be broken out into portions. Mr. Councilman Lawson's comments concerning changing the process for the home occupancy permit is more a request to Mr. Krutz to have staff start on looking at that issue. And I'd ask that actually be a comment at the end during council's comments.
Okay.
I believe Mr., or excuse me, Councilmember Lawson's motion overturning Mr. Krutz's decision on the home occupation permit needs to be a little, just a single sentence as just saying, I moved to overturn Mr. Krutz's decision.
I'm going to move to overturn Mr. Krutz's revocation of the home occupation permit.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Deere.
So I will second, but I have questions and discussion.
Okay, then move on to discussion.
Mayor.
I'll call on you next, Charlene.
Okay.
So first, I'm only, I'll support Councilman Lawson and where he's going with this, but I have a couple of questions. And I think reading what is here, and I don't, as it reads, I do believe that, I'd also agree that it's your lucky day. You need to go back and read what you originally signed. You have a chance right now to fix this where in the future, I mean, you can go get this and get your business and take care of your family and you can get things right. Or I'm, please, understand, I believe we need to not have this kind of stuff happening. I mean, just according to your own contract, which you wrote, we can tell, you know, it's been violated over and over and over again. And so what I would say without question is that there has to be change. And I can tell you, as the council goes, at least for me, I'll be, and this is not you, I don't care what ward it's in, I, you know, we care for families, we care for your kids, we care. But you cannot, cannot be doing this. And so for me, I said, I second that, but I ask the same. It doesn't make any sense that we can have a contract with somebody. This is what they said they're going to do, and then they go and do whatever they want, and now we get stuck where we somehow get in this place. So I want to see this changed. I want to see it changed immediately.
Ms. Bybee.
I'm having a real hard time. I don't know, I couldn't ask you what the actual motion is so I can determine if I'm going to vote or not. I need maybe into the microphone a little bit better. I'm not clear on the motion.
The motion was to revoke...
Overturn.
Overturn the city manager's...
Revocation.
Revocation of the HOP.
Okay, with, was there any stipulation or any other than, and I would agree, serious matter, and I would agree with my other council members on this business and the use of it has been, you know, they, they're not, you know, they're not, I agree with staff in that they're not complying with what the business license offers, and I have a big problem with that. I also understand, can we work with them? So is that kind of the intent? The motion is to revoke or to overturn the manager's decision and us working with them in hopes of resolving the issues that we have, but actually the only, the motion itself is just to overturn so that they don't lose the license. But any further action, is that something that has to come back to us so that we state, Cheryl, do we state that in the motion or you just want the simple motion that is stated in our package?
We're going to use a simple motion, and under comments, we'll address the other part.
That's correct. Charlene, did you hear that?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Anderson.
I just want to make it clear where my thoughts are on this as well. I will follow Mr. Lawson and where he wants to go with this, but I just want to make it clear that here in Sparks, we want to be a city where you want to live and where you want to work, as well as we complement those that are the entrepreneurs that want to own their own businesses and venture down that path. The thing that is unacceptable, in my opinion, is if you're trying to work your way around the system to get your part without following what should be done according to the codes. That's why we have gone to these measures to set up municipal codes to make it to where your neighbors are happy to have you next to them. I believe what's been going on here is unacceptable, and hopefully you do take this opportunity to make the change. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any further discussion? Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, I also have a home occupation permit for my photography business. There's no way I could have a commercial real estate and make profit of my business. So I do understand, though, that it's not something by rights or privilege, and it's one of my, you know, it's important to me to have a home occupation permit for my business to function, and I hope you guys understand from here how important it is to try to maintain that and do everything you can to ensure you can operate in, healthy operating home occupation permit for yourself as well as others. Thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion? You know, I'd be, I'd mention a guess that you'll be back here if there are no, no, ma'am, you already had your chance to talk. You'll be... Huh? Yeah. But my guess is you'll be back here if you don't straighten it up. Okay, we have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, okay. Public comment, I'm going to open up the public comment. Period. Anybody wishing to speak now? If you'd like to come down, ma'am, you have three minutes. Give us your name for the record again.
My name is Clara Okusen. Clara Okusen, my name.
Okay.
What I want to say is they should, I am pleading with you guys to write to Courage. Courage is my in-law. This thing they are saying is none of my own business and this, like Erin Lady, we don't do it. God knows we don't do this. It's Courage that is doing it. You guys should please join together and send him a warning or whatever you want to do with him. Do with him, not Erin Lady, please. Because it's Courage that is causing this problem for me and my daughter. We don't do anything. We don't sell cars. If they can give him a warning and be giving him fine where he's paying the fine, maybe he will come to his senses, but the fine should not come to Erin Lady. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak this time? Come on down, please. And then we state your name for me.
My name is Joy. And just to talk about what he was saying, he came to the neighborhood one time. He wasn't, he wasn't, he came and started taking pictures of me. I wasn't rude to you, but if you have come to me and asked me, hey, what are you guys doing? I will explain to you. You don't just come to me and start taking pictures. And I asked him, why are you taking pictures? He didn't say anything. He was just there taking pictures of me and my kids, and that incident does not have anything to do with the business. That happened way at the beginning of the year, close to the year. It doesn't have anything to do with me. So when he was loading his container, taking stuff, shipping stuff out, it doesn't have anything to do with me. It's not about my business. When I was registering this business, I know that it's just home, I'm not, I'm not selling cars, I'm not doing anything for my house. All I'm doing, all I'm storing in my garage is my cleaning supply. It has nothing to do with me. All the complaints from the city has nothing to do with my business. So if they have issue with the cars parked around, with the bicycle parked around, they should deal with the person, putting the bicycle in there. They should not deal with me. Though is my husband, we are two different person. If you go steal, does that mean I steal? So if they have anything to do, they should deal with him, they should not deal with me, and I'm not, I'm not, that is, I was not friendly because he wasn't friendly to me either. He just came to me, how will you feel if someone comes close to you and starts taking picture randomly, taking picture of me and my kids? That was why I approached him. He didn't say anything because he's a friend to my neighbors. And my neighbors confirmed that I have a ward member that is a friend, that I can do anything I want to do. So I'm not somebody like that. It's just misunderstanding because you approached me wrongly, and I wasn't happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments. Okay, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Okay. I'll get you next.
All right. I'd like the staff to propose code amendments that would allow home occupation permits and potentially other permits to be revoked due to zoning violations occurring on the property. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Krutz, you have next.
As I reflect on the vote that took place today, I come to the conclusion that the tools that we have as staff to try and rectify situations that are adversely impacting our neighborhoods are inadequate. They are insufficient for us to cause the change that you all clearly want us to make. And so in that light, I understand why you overturned the decision that I made as the head of our staff and fully supported and will move forward. It is, however, an admission that the tools that we have are ineffective to bring situations like this to a successful conclusion for neighborhoods. I understand and appreciate the direction that you've given us today to essentially bring you back proposals for additional tools, and we will certainly labor to do that. We are going to need the active involvement and leadership of our city attorney's office to get there. Ultimately, they're the ones that need to be able to stand up in front of us when we've done something and be supportive. So I can't do it without them and without staff. So it is going to, it is going to take a team effort, but we do need the attorney's office to lead us on this and lead us to the answer that we can defend.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, last week, neighborhood of the Wood Trail Park area in Sparks did a great cleanup at their local park, and I just wanted to commend them of it and tell you guys a little bit about it, likewise, challenge those of you that have a neighborhood park as well. So what it was is back in August of 2016, Nancy Sapmary, across from Wood Trail Park... Nancy Satmary, across from Wood Trail Park, decided to rally her neighbors to clean up the park and have pride in it. So two times a year, they get together and, and do a great job cleaning up the park. Got to go down there and, and see them. There were 14 people out there cleaning, 10 adults, one teenager, and three children that happened to be grandchildren out there helping out. And it inspired me enough that I've come back to our neighborhood and said, come on, the challenge is on. Let's, let's do the same thing. So I just want to say thank you very much to Nancy and all the crew out there, as well as challenge you guys to, to do the same in your neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Deere?
I just want to encourage people if they're looking for something to do on Veterans Day. I know a lot's going on. But we are going to be having ribbon cutting, a phase one for the Nevada Veterans Memorial over at the marina. Should be a pretty incredible morning. It's at 9:00 a.m. But if you get there a little early, there'll be a display of some of our Marines, veterans, doing a pretty cool display with raising the flag and some things. So it should be an awesome time. So that is on Veterans Day, and a lot of great things going on at the marina. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned.
Good, okay. I'm already screwing up. I'm going to call it over to the Sparks Street Development Agency meeting with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
She's gone.
Absent.
Here, here.
Here. Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Dare. Acting Chief Legal Officer Iting.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crutts.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Awesome. We're going to open it up for public comment. Any public, want to make some public comment? Looks like none. We'll close public comment. We'll open up for the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Awesome. Motion by Lawson, or Councilman Lawson, second by Councilman Dare. All in favor? A vote or?
Aye.
Please vote. Cool. Motion passes unanimously. 5.1, the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve, second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's, yeah, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. 6.1, business items. Do you have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
How about, or Councilman Lawson, motion to approve, and how about a second by you, Christopher, or Mr. Councilman Dare?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or please vote. Sorry. I'll figure it out someday.
We're going to vote twice.
7.1, comments from the public. Anyone from the public? Looks like none. 7.2, comments from agency or chief administration officer? Looks like none. We are adjourned.